The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Then I'd ask Julie to read our mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Julie. Next is our open forum. This is a chance for members of the community to speak before the board about anything they wish. I don't have any forms filled out today, but is there anyone tonight who would like to speak before the board? The little one over there wants to.[103.12][103.12](Laughter).
It sounds like someone is speaking up.
Yes.
Maybe writing out the form is a little deal breaker.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our recognitions. We'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to honor the Herb Kohl Education Foundation Scholarship and Fellowship Program Award winners for this school year. And I'm very pleased to share with you tonight, we'll be recognizing two students and two teachers. And what I'd like to do is invite the principals and the students to come forward. We have one student representing West High School, and Principal Mark Flaiton is here, and that's Anna Schout. And also, we have Tommy Jennings, administrator from Preble High School, with Jenna Van den Huyten. And perhaps, if you could, maybe just speak a little bit about what your future plans are. First of all, congratulations and welcome. And just maybe share a few words about where your future is, where you see your future going, and so forth. Maybe we'll start with Anna.
Hi, I'm Anna. My future plans are that I'm going to UW-Lacrosse, and I'm going to study biology and Spanish. I'm not exactly quite sure where I'm going to go after. Probably medical research or working in a lab, possibly biology teacher, like an ELL teacher who teaches biology and science.
Very good. Congratulations. Anna was named a Herb Kohl Educational Foundation Excellence Scholarship. It was her award. The Excellence Scholarship recipients, and there were 19 here in the northeast Wisconsin, demonstrated excellence in the academic arena, have high motivation to achieve, and have displayed a broad range of activity and leadership outside the academic setting. Congratulations.[236.31][236.31](Applause). And Jenna was the winner of the Herb Kohl Education Foundation Initiative Scholar. And as an initiative scholarship recipient, she was chosen by her schools and by a rigorous committee, as was Anna, for demonstrating exceptional initiative in the classroom and showing strong promise for highly successful experience in college and beyond. Congratulations, and maybe share a little bit about your experience as well, and where you see yourself next.
I plan on going to TC for criminal justice, and to become a cop, or to work in the crime scene, and figure out all the DNA and everything.
Very good. Well, let's congratulate you both.[287.22][287.22](Applause). And if you would like to come up, we'd like to have some pictures with the board president. Any words from the board at all, or anything you'd like to share?
We just want to say, as a board, we're very proud of your achievements, and we wish you well, and congratulations, and good luck to you.
I'm looking forward to having them both come back to our community when they finish their education. I think they're gifted students, and we'd really love to have you back here, so come on back up.
And if you brought any people that would like to be a picture.
Yes, please bring him up.
Bring your people up.
Yes. I know Anna's mother is here. And I believe Jenna's mother is here.
Come on, people.
Jenna's family.
My mother's a baby.
All the way up here.
And if we could have Mr. Flaiton. Mr. Jennings. You're part of the people. You're the people.
Lose the binky quick.
It's a packer binky, it's okay.
Congratulations. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Flaiton up, along with Lisa Merkel, and Principal Diane Stelmach, and Michelle Flechek from King Elementary. So, another West winners. And maybe, Mr. Flaiton, if you would like to introduce us perhaps to Lisa, and who she does at West High School, and invite Mrs. Stelmach to do the same for Michelle.
Sure. We are blessed at West High School to have a Herb Kohl Fellowship winner this year. Mrs. Lisa Merkel teaches in our Science Department, and has taught in our Science Department for several years. She does an excellent job with all of our students, whether they're chemistry-laden students, or physical science students, team-taught students. She also teaches a graduate class through the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay, on children and the effects of poverty, and other trauma-informed care with them. And we're blessed to have her at West High School as one of our staff members, so Lisa Merkel.
And I'm proud to... Oh, you want to go ahead and talk first? No? Go ahead. Go ahead, Lisa. Say something.
Lisa and Michelle that you're about to meet are selected. Eighteen teachers from this area in northeast Wisconsin, so it's a very big honor, and clearly they jury through these folks and really identify what they believe is the very best. And we feel very honored to have you as part of a scholarship winner, so congratulations as well.
Thank you.
Usually Lisa's never short on words with me, so I'm a little surprised, but that's good.[504.12][504.12](Laughter) I always love our conversations. I do. They're amazing, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your service, too.
Okay, and I'm excited to introduce Michelle Flechek. She's first-grade teacher at King Elementary School. This is her second year at King, but she's been with our district for about...
Seven years?
Seven, yeah. About seven years. And we are very lucky to have her on our staff. She has been a go-getter ever since she joined our staff last year. She's on the cutting edge with using technology in the classroom, and she's on our leadership team that is working on implementing the engineering components for the School of Engineering at King. And she's just very excited about working with kids, all kinds of kids, and so we're really excited about having her. So congratulations, Michelle.[558.54][558.54](Applause).
If I could, thank you, Michelle. If I could just share a little bit about this Educational Foundation Teacher Fellow. The Fellowship recipients that we see, both Lisa and Michelle, were selected because of their superior ability to inspire the love of learning in their students, their ability to motivate others, their leadership, and their service, both inside and outside the classroom. So we feel very honored to have you tonight, and congratulate you as well.
Thank you.[591.58][591.58](Applause).
On behalf of the board, I just want to say, we all know that we can't do what we do, any of us, without the teachers in the classroom. So really want to thank you for your work, and congratulate you on your excellence in teaching, and hope you have a great summer. So thanks.
Thank you. And if you would come up then and bring your family and your administrators. Congratulations.
All right.
Yes. That concludes our recognition tonight.
Next, we'll move to our roll call, Sandy.
Becker?
Here.
Here.
Excused?
Jan?
Here.
Right here.
Excused, he may be late.
Warren?
Here.
Sinclair?
Here.
Engels?
Here.
We have five board members, and one board member who's coming back from being out of town, and may be here a little bit later. Also joining us at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have Grace Sinclair, who is the incoming president of Inter-City Student Council next year from Preble High School. Welcome, well, not welcome, as you've indicated before. And Hunter Engels is a welcome. You're new to the Inter-City Student Councils, is that correct?
Yes. I'll be the upcoming president-in-charge.
Great. Okay. And Hunter is from southwest.
Yes.
Thanks for coming, and welcome. And also, we're joined at the table by Sandy Heller, our board executive assistant. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the following minutes: regular board meeting, April 18, 2016; special board meeting, May 2, 2016; special board meeting, closed sessions, April 18, 2016, and May 2, 2016.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Minutes have been approved. We have no communications to place on file today, and I think KOS makes a motion.
I would like to move to reorder the agenda. If we could move action item number one, motion number one from the Organizational Support Agenda, so that our financial person is here, but has other commitments.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
LeSueur?
Carried five zero. So, Andy, the mic? We probably should have someone make the motion. Who's making the motion is going to have to...
All right. I will move that the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of escrow account with respect to and defeasance of certain of the general obligation promissory notes as presented be approved.
Second.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. This fall, when the board acted on setting the levy for the year, we included some additional monies where we believed we had capacity to maintain the mill rate, and with the intention of paying it, those levies at a future point in time. And so that process is called defeasance. It's a legal term, a legal financial term. And again, it allows districts to levy money in a certain time period for the repayment at a future point in time. Sometimes you can equate what's going on in schools with, you've got a house mortgage, and you make the annual pay, or the monthly payments, but it's not quite like that, because if we had a few extra dollars at home, we might pay that right away to bring that debt down. With some of these debt issues that we have, we don't have that ability. We might have that extra money, but we can't immediately pay that, so we have to go through this defeasance process. So I have Mike Clark here from Baird, who's acted, we've done this the last several years.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. Thank you for accommodating me on your agenda. It'd be Kiwanee doing the same thing yet tonight. So what just came around is the defeasance, utilizing the dollars that were included in the 1516 tax levy. This is a format that you've seen before. As you look at it, the before defeasance, we're looking at the 2014 bond issue from the last referendum. And you can see that we defeased a portion of it last year. We're coming back and defeating another portion this year. It's not generating a significant amount of savings, because the interest rates on this debt are very low, and we're defees prefunding non-callable debt. So the escrow, these dollars will be deposited into an escrow. The escrow will make these payments when they come due. Your savings is essentially the interest you're earning on those dollars while they sit in the escrow. Your debt profile's getting very low. The district will have an opportunity, if it would choose, to look at defeating some additional debt. This year, the fall of 16, going into the 1617 fiscal year, has about $3.8 million of debt that would be eligible for defeasance. The district has two other issues that are both at 0 percent, the QSCB and the QZAB. Probably some, plus those are a little more tricky to pre-fund, and they are at 0 percent, so probably not something that you would look to do. So, you know, after this year, if the district would do something additional, then your options become a little bit more limited. But again, this will close on June 2. This will, the dollars will be deposited into the escrow account. And then, again, the district, the bonds will still be out there with your name on them, but they will become the legal responsibility of the escrow account. This is the third time we've done a defeasance in the last four years. Any questions I can answer?
What is the interest rate on these notes that were...
You can see over on the, before, we're looking at the peach box. You're at 2, 1 and 1/2 and 2 percent, those three maturities. And again, you know, it's a, we defees the callable debt the first last year, and that generated more savings, because those maturities get paid off on the call date, so ahead of schedule. These maturities, since you have no, longer have any callable debt, are being paid off on the scheduled payment date, and again, the savings is really the interest you earn in the escrow account. The escrow account is limited to government securities, and you're not earning much on government securities these days, so...
Yeah, I assume there would be no benefit in the future to retiring debt with a 0% interest?
They're a little trickier, too. I've had some preliminary conversations with Quarles and Brady, knowing that you're getting down there in terms of your debt. And there was just this long sigh. Yes, it can be done, but there's a lot of steps involved. And again, it's at 0 percent, so, you know, but you, you know, from a levy management standpoint, it will become, you know, unless some new debt is added, your ability to use Fund 39 levy to manage your overall levy will be a little more limited.
The handout that I provided, it's for the discussion that we have around the facilities' master plan, and it gets into that topic, because I think what Mike is saying is there's probably, there's some pros and cons of doing it, but we have to be aware of that. And so I think some of it plays into other circumstances that might say, yeah, it's a good idea, or why would you? So somewhere in between there.
And the other thing about this payment, when it goes into the escrow account, it would be, it will be aided this year, so you'll receive additional state aid next year based on this expenditure, which we do not have factored, and we don't know what the aid formula looks like, but it's another benefit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sandy?
Aye.
Aye.
Jan? Aye.
LeSueur?
Aye.
Thirty-five.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again. Thanks.
All right, then we will go back to our original agenda. Next is a monitoring report, and that will be facilitated by Mike Lecker.
Thank you, Brenda. All right. Our topic this evening is family engagement, and I'm going to invite Kim Paulo to the table to introduce her Equity Department team, that will be talking about family engagement and promoting engagement, equity, and excellence. So we're excited to have them all at the table with us this evening.
Thank you for having us tonight. Just a little background, this is the first year that this team has really been together as our Equity Department for the district. So Jennifer has been on point for a number of years, and moved into the People Services position, which brought us Reva. And then, as you recall, we were able to bring on board two family engagement specialists to kind of round out our team. So the presentation that they're going to give you tonight kind of captures what we've been working on this school year, and then a little bit about what we're looking forward to working on in the future. I'm going to let them introduce themselves, so you have a name and a face with the title, and then they're going to go through their presentation, and then we'll answer some questions. So Jennifer, you want to start?
I'm Jennifer Hayes. I'm currently the Associate Director of People Services. Been in that role just this school year. This is my first school year, and unfortunately, I'm leaving the district at the end of this year, moving with my family. But was the previous Equity Coordinator, and was very excited to have Reva come on, who was one of our Title VII Engagement Coordinators, to take that role.
Hi, my name is Reva. I'm the District Equity Coordinator. And what I wanted to share with you, as we kind of introduce ourselves, we wanted to kind of talk about kind of the highlights and strengths that we bring to this team and to the district. So I was actually born and raised in the Green Bay community, so actually attended the Green Bay Public Schools as a graduate from East High School. And as a member of the Menominee Tribe, I also have two children that attend the district that are biracial. So it's been a neat experience to bring that along with me, and know what that experience has been for them, coming through our school district, being multicultural, as well as I have a student, my son, that has a learning disability as well. So being able to navigate that and be able to bring that to the table with my experience has really kind of helped me personally be extremely involved in the work that we do.
My name is Ingrid Parker Gill. I am the Family Engagement Coordinator, primarily for African-American families. I am a transplant. My family relocated here in '99, so we raised four kids, two graduated in this school district and two graduated outside of this school district. I'm very passionate about what I do. I have experience in, prior to, at House of Hope, as a parent educator, family advocate, but previously served in seven years as a community development manager, nine counties for Girl Scouts. So I bring that to the table as well. I love our families. I think that everybody can be successful, so I just want to be a part of helping that, make that happen.
Would you bring those microphones over to the folks watching on TV?
I know Ingrid's not usually this spoken. We covered Chapel Elementary together one day, our whole team, when they had an activity, so I know they can corral the kids with a lot louder voice than that, so...
Sure. My name is Luis Franco. I've been with our wonderful district for close to 20 years now. I came into the area directly from Mexico back in '97. I do say that I've been with the district for 20 years, not in the sense of job longevity, but more of, I'm the result of the wonderful process that our wonderful district has imprinted on me and my kids. I have two students that are currently going into Madison, junior and soon to be a senior, and I also have a sixth grade over at Edison. I find my role very similar to the stories of a lot of our Latino parents who immigrate from a different country, and trying to find this education to be the real gate, the real key to open doors, doors to success. I'm living proof of that, and I think that my life story has relevance in those sense, and I can transfer that same message to our parents. I was also the Latino outreach coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club for about five years, that developed into the unit director over on the east side, did that for a couple of years, also worked for Family Services around the same capacity with similar programs under the umbrella of Family Services.
All right. So we wanted to start out our presentation by laying kind of the foundation for the work that we do in family engagement. So we've done a lot of research around best practices with family engagement, and so we wanted to emphasize that the process for family engagement is really a well-thought-out process. A lot of times, people think family engagement is just kind of those one-time activities or events, and that's what we look at as family engagement. But we try to get our district and everyone that we work with to understand, this is actually an ongoing process. It's something that you have to ingrain into your day-to-day practices. It's around your beliefs, your ways in which you, your attitudes, your practices that you have towards the families that you work with. So that's what we do when we go out into the districts, is try to help kind of merge that into our daily practices, the importance of that. Our research shows that there are several areas that are best practices for family engagement. It includes allowing access to our parents and our families to the work that we're doing in our districts. It's doing home visits, actually doing the one-on-one, face-to-face engagement with our families, providing services and centers for them to come and interact directly with our schools, as well as a two-generation strategy, which is something that not always is on the top of the list for everyone, but best practices has shown, when you focus on that two-generational approach, it's not just the parents, but it's also building that into the family with their students as well, and also some oversight and accountability for being able to track and be accountable to the work that you are doing with those families. So those are all a part of the foundation that we use when we go and do family engagements in our districts. Those two approaches, we start out, the first one, we call kind of a shift in our mindset. So we go into our districts, and we talk about equity and equality, and kind of what the differences are between the two, as well as bilingual and bicultural. That is something that we've been really talking a lot about in our district this year, because a lot of times, we say, well, we just need to be both bicultural or bilingual, because that's how we reach out to our families. But a lot of times, just because using Spanish, for example, if we translate something in Spanish, that doesn't necessarily mean we are engaging our families, because it may be written in a way that just isn't culturally responsive, and isn't still having the same meaning that we think that we have when we translate it into Spanish. So we've been doing a lot of trainings on what does it mean to be bicultural, not just putting it in Spanish, but putting it in a way that's culturally relevant for our families, just as one example. So that's one area that we have been working hard on this year, as well as our Equity Institute. If you are familiar with that Gary Howard that we have done numerous years of work with, we are on our last cohort of trainings with that right now, and we are starting our next steps of implementing, what is that going to look like? Now that they've learned all the foundation for Gary Howard and the equity stuff, where are they at in that process in their schools? So that's kind of our next phase that we're at right now, that we go out and work with each of our schools on. The second approach, that's kind of that approach in the mindsets and the trainings, and the other approach is the actual bridging of families into the district. So we'll go a little bit more into that. The equity versus equality, the big piece that we want people to understand is, a lot of times, we say, we want to serve all of our kids, and we want all of them to have our services equally. But what we're trying to get people to understand is equity, if you look at the picture that's in the presentation, that is equity. We weren't able to show the whole entire video that we use in our training, but it starts out with all the kids standing on the grounds, all level, and that's equal. And what we try to get everyone to understand is, with equality, we have to give them the supports that they need to all get them to the level that we want. So that's how we end up with this picture here. So equality, everyone's standing on the ground, but still not having the same access. Equity here, where everybody is given what they need to have the same access. So that's one key piece. The other pieces of our trainings that we do is, we talk about the, we'll come back to it, that's okay though, we talk about two other trainings, we call the danger of a single story. And that, we have found, has been really important in working with our schools, is a lot of times, we hear one story, and we tend to overgeneralize that to all of our families. So for example, say, with an African-American family in poverty, whatever that experience has been with that family, sometimes we overgeneralize that, and we think that applies to all African-American families that are living in poverty. families that are living in poverty. So we talk about that danger of a single story. We actually go out and show a video, and then we do discussion groups with our teachers and with our staff around, how do we make sure that our perceptions are coming from a place of education and that we're actually learning the individual story and not just overgeneralizing? And we also do a presentation around privilege as well. And we just wanted to share with you, we actually took this training as a team at an Equity and Social Justice Training, and it was very eye-opening for us. I mean, this is the work we've done, I've been doing diversity trainings for over 20 years now, and for me, it was very eye-opening to remember, we all have privilege, not just, I think the first thing people think is race and ethnicity, it goes far beyond that. We all have privileges in different areas, and how does that affect the work that we do and how we interact with others? So those are just a few of the key trainings that we've been going out and doing in the districts, that we go up as a team, because we all bring a different perspective to those discussions. So I think that has been really unique with this team this year.
Before you slip ahead.
Sure.
For the audience at home, if you go back to the last slide, I just want to make sure everyone understands that when we talk about equality, if everything were equal, two of those three would not be able to see the difference. Right? So, to get to equity, you have to figure out how to support each individual to be able to get and have the same access. So it's kind of hard to get it if you haven't seen it before, so I just want to make sure everybody understood that. They wouldn't even, two of those three wouldn't even be able to see through the fence, over the fence.
And in the video, they help by giving all of our kids one box, because though you have one child who can't see. So the two can see, but one cannot, but that's equality, like we're going to help and support them. And equity is, no, the tall kid can already see, so give the little one two boxes. So give everybody what they need. It's really powerful, we're going to share that link.
Yes, it is.
Who do you show that video to?
We have been going out into the school districts and doing them at the staff meetings. Part of the Gary Howard Training is, we have cultural responsive teams in each of the schools that have gone through the Gary Howard, so those teams are responsible for implementing the Gary Howard practices. So what we have done is come in and supplement those with these trainings. And then talk about how does that apply when you're doing outreach and engagement with families? So we do the actual application of it.
And are you doing, sorry, are you doing that with the entire staff or just the ones that have been trained?
We are doing it with the cohorts that are asking right now, but as we move into the next.
With the entire staff?
Yes. But we're doing it with the schools that are asking currently, and then the next phase is going to totally be consistently across the board for all, everybody to have that opportunity to have those trainings.
Is there a link that you could provide the Board to that video, so the Board members can see that video?
Sure.
I think we'd all like to see that.
Sure. Yeah, we actually intended to show it here, but it was, for some reason, it just wasn't working.
How long is it?
It's two minutes. Two minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty short, but it's very good.
If you could figure it out, that we could show it another time, I think it would be nice for the community to see, not that, for our four-person viewing audience.
Yes, we'd be happy to share that with you.
Great, okay.
All right. So the next piece is our family opportunities. So, this is how we, this is what we use to bridge our families into our district. So we gave you a few examples here. Casa Alba, Luis has been going out and actually going into the community at Casa Alba, so that he's there and be able to have those face-to-face opportunities with our families to be able to answer questions, concerns, give them additional information, trainings, all kinds of stuff, but we are actually going out into the community to meet them where they're at. We've also, another example is our new scholar program, has parent sessions along with it. And so we make ourselves available to go and use that also as an opportunity to engage with our parents and assist with that academic success of their students. We also do have done dinners at Preble, we did a parent-student night at Preble where we brought in a national speaker. Another big highlight is Title VII with our family nights. We had a language grant this year where we've been able to teach more language and culture, so we were able to do one family night a month. And one of our biggest ones, we had, I believe, is about 135 people in attendance, which is pretty big for a parent night, and so we're extremely excited about that, and doing things from cross-language storytelling.
Title VII, maybe not everybody knows what Title VII is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Title VII Indian Education Program. We have seven staff members that go out and teach language and culture from our 11 federally recognized tribes in our district. So we do those and offer it to all of our Title VII Indian Education students. We also have done one big large event with DPI, which is a pre-college summer learning opportunity. And the great thing this year was, we had staff there that were able to assist families in filling out those applications with DPI, and helping just make sure that they understood the process of getting our students in, and a big success was, we had over 40 students be able to receive those scholarships and attend some summer programs. So that was really neat as well. Something new this year is our Transition Night, which I'll talk a little bit more near the end. It's a pilot program. We also feel, like I mentioned earlier, the importance of going out and meeting our families where they're at. We like to continue to tell our district, "We are the people that help bridge our families to the district." So part of that bridging is building those community collaborations and reaching out to other organizations that work with our families and helping bring them in. So Casa Alba I mentioned, another great one this year, the Dr. Martin Luther King Event in partnership with NWTC. We were able to get students that actually were able to perform at that event, and it was a neat opportunity because our parents were so proud. All the families were lined up on the wall and they were just beaming from ear to ear just how excited they were that their kids could represent our district as part of that community event. Scholarships Inc., we've worked with Girl Scouts, doing some workshops with our students. Another great leadership opportunity that we've communicated, used this as an opportunity to communicate with families, was our St. Norbert College, does a series called For a Better Future. Their leadership opportunities where we can bring our students out to the campus, where they have an inspirational speaker and give them tours, and just kind of speak into them the importance of higher education. So we've been able to assist and facilitate some of those. We have also had the opportunity, Luis has put together some public radio announcements, public service radio announcements, in Spanish, as another outreach opportunity to our families, as well as some partnerships with African Heritage. The family support piece is probably more traditionally what people know as family engagement. So there's kind of two areas. The home visits is where we've actually worked with our Student Support Services, in collaboration with them, going out into the homes and actually meeting with the parents. So whatever needs that they have, we go out and connect with them and help build that initial relationship. And then in partnership with Student Supports, we're able to kind of bridge that family over to them, to have that continued ongoing support in the district. The other piece is the individualized support. A lot of times, our team gets called for working with individual families as concerns have come up, whether it's doing some connections to the community, whether it's doing some cultural mediation. Sometimes we have families where, you know, sometimes we offer things that just have a different cultural connotation to that, and so we can step in and help do kind of that mediation and making sure that they're understanding what we're asking for, what the expectations are, whether it's attendance, behavior, or any of those things. And conflict resolution is another one. If we run into some behaviors or misunderstandings, we step in and we've also helped that, kind of do some resolution with that in our schools. So, plans for our future. So right now, we are working on putting together a tracking system. As you heard in the beginning, some of that best practices is that accountability. So we are working on an engagement tracking system right now, where we're able to track what type of interactions that we're having with the families, whether it's that one-on-one support, whether it was a community event. So we are in kind of the final stages of that. We are also exploring the possibility of adult learning centers and what that looks like and what that could mean for us as a district. We also are starting to partner with the Title I Program and some of the family events that they are doing in their individual schools, and coming out and helping kind of apply their cultural lens to the family events that they have, kind of on a per-building basis on their needs and their individual buildings. The Transition Event for Families, that was the one I mentioned a little earlier, that's a pilot program we're starting this year, where it's going to be specifically at Washington Middle School, kind of a trial run this year, and it's going to be specifically for families coming from fifth grade into sixth grade, and we're going to do a presentation to them about what are those expectations, and do it in a way that's culturally relevant. And it was actually based off of our EEC, which is our Education Equity Committee that we have, which is made up of parents. And so off of their voices of, what do you wish that you would have known going through those transitions? And how can we get that information to parents? So that's how we developed our presentation, as well as they felt it was really important for our parents to have an opportunity to network, engage with other families, so that's going to be kind of the second piece of that. And then also, we have an opportunity this fall, we're going to be putting together a family event in collaboration with the Special Education Department, where EEC, our team, and Special Education are all going to partner to do an event specifically for our parents, to be able to answer some of their questions and understand the Special Education system as well. So, a lot of great things coming up in the future, we're really excited. So, thank you so much for allowing us the time to come in and present to you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
I think, I'd like to start out with a question and then open to the rest of the Board, and maybe each of you could address this. What is your biggest challenge in engaging our families?
In my line of work, I happen to encounter a lot of misconceptions coming with our families. I think that they want to provide a cultural aspect of how to specifically interact with some of the schools and institutions' procedures that we have. And I think that sometimes that creates a mismatch, it creates miscommunication. So I think that it is really important for us to be on the upfront of communicating the families, how we run business as usual, to make sure that we, when we talk about certain things, we are actually talking apples to apples to the families that I work with. To bring you a vivid example, when my Latino community talks about scholarships, they don't talk about the kind of scholarships that we have over here that will promote you, probably facilitate you a venue to go to college. When we talk about scholarships, in a scholarship program in most Latin American countries, it's a program where the government subsidizes living costs for the student. So you can be in fifth grade and be a recipient of a scholarship. So, when we hear these terms of scholarships, families approach some of our institutions, requesting those type of services, implemented our cultural responsive lens from where they're coming from. So I think that it is our job to explain apples to apples to our parents and how the system works. Close to 95% of the things that I process is miscommunication, so.
I would also say miscommunication and expectations. A lot of the families that we deal with don't, they don't have the background to know what's expected of our school system. They might come, for example, I'm from Chicago, they come from Chicago, and the environment is very different than what it is here. So, knowing what is expected upfront and helping them walk through that process, to help them, help their child be successful, because that's really why they're here. So that's my take on it.
I was just kind of going to add to theirs as well. That's a lot of the times what we find, is our families, when we go back and we have time to actually sit down, once things have kind of de-escalated, it's getting them to have a chance for their voice to be heard. And I think sometimes we have structures set up where they don't always feel like they have that voice or the opportunity to ask questions. And not that we as a district aren't available, but I think sometimes it's a little different system for them to navigate, where they don't always know, who do I go to to ask to get these answers? So I think that is kind of a unique opportunity we have now, is we can say, we have family engagement coordinators, contact them, because we can take that time to build that relationship, see what it is you need, and make sure we direct you to the right person, versus them having to call and maybe, you know, having to navigate that on their own. They feel like they have that voice and are heard, so.
Jennifer, your thoughts?
Yeah, we find that when we're talking to many of our families, especially if it's a behavior concern, there are families who didn't necessarily have a good history in school themselves. And so it's trying to be that bridge, to say, "Yep, I know your situation wasn't necessarily positive, but I brought your student to this area for a great experience, and we're going to provide that for him, him or her. So, give us an opportunity, let us make a difference in the life of your child, and we can pretty much promise you that it's going to be a different experience." But we will have families who will say, "Nope, I don't want special ed, I was in special ed, it didn't help me." Special ed here can do something totally different for you, so let us lay out for you what that'll look like. Or we'll have parents who, you know, they don't want us to call them. Every time you call us for something negative, and so they work with the parents sometimes, make sure you're giving that positive, you're giving that right ratio, so parents get positive calls sometimes. But we're kind of battling what they experienced historically, and so that makes them stand off a little bit from experiencing us here.
Okay. Other questions by Board members? Katie?
Just, when you introduced yourselves, it was clear that you're very passionate about what you're doing, and also you're very capable, you're very capable advocates for your own children. I think that's such a critical piece, that our students have someone to advocate for themselves. Are there programs that help you teach parents how to advocate for their students?
Programs that we have currently.
Right, right.
So we don't have anything in place right now outside of the one-on-one, helping them to navigate and advocate for themselves, where we kind of walk them through that. What we are looking at next year is, one thing I didn't put on that list, Ingrid is exploring for us right now is parent cafes, and partnership in the community of having opportunities where we can come in and train parents on those things. We also see the event in this fall with Special Education for our parents. We see those as all opportunities where we can lay out, how does that system work? What does the framework look like? And how do we help you navigate that system, so that you know who to call when you need things? So we kind of see it as a two-pronged approach. Let's show you, let's give you the opportunity to connect with the people you know, and then let's support you, so that you can feel confident in navigating that system.
And also, if I can add to that, we currently have a collaboration goal with Scholarship Singh, through New Scholars. We meet with the parents on a almost monthly basis, and that's nothing but showing the parents how to advocate for their students. Same process goes to Casa Alba. We provide the parents with the information that they need, but we also provide them with the tools on, moving forward, how can you actually advocate for your kid? And it's important for them to know, it's really important for the parents to understand that we're not something that is trending, we're here to stay, we're here for the long haul, and we have consistency in place in order to see that the parents can see it through for themselves as well.
Well, the skills that you help them develop, hopefully they can use to advocate in the community as well when they need assistance. It's critical.
Well, I'd like to, how do you measure success? End of your work week, how can you look back and say, "We made a difference in the lives of X number of families," or "Students," or whatever? How can you tell that what you're doing works?
Nope, I'm going to turn it towards you. Well, I think, well, I know, family engagement is a spectrum. So success on this end is very different on this end. Success with me helping someone attend an IEP meeting and giving them the tools to help advocate for themselves and their student, that's success, when they feel that they have what they need, and you walk out knowing, "I've made a difference." The other part of success is when you are at a school and you start out by reading to the children, but then you get a call to say, "Can you come in and help us, you know, I want you to help us work with our second grade team on social studies." And so, "All right, well, go there, we talk things through." I am not an educator by trade, so I definitely bring a different perspective, so I'm able to give them things. But then, further down the line, when you can talk to the teachers and they're excited about what the kids are learning, and then you have a student who's not engaged, and the teachers are very, the teachers are very excited, because now you have a student who's now engaged because of the tools that you've given them, and it really is just kind of having conversations and helping them broaden their horizons. Those are two different success stories. And so we have to, we have to work within to see, okay, what does that look like for us? Because it is, it is a spectrum. So it's not something that you can just tap down and say, "Yes, we did it," because we're dealing with people, and people are all different, so.
Before you ask that question, I was actually going to wrap up a little bit in the end and remind you that a lot of the work that this group does is really behind the scenes. It's at night, it's on the weekends, it's during the day. It's not flashy, it's not out there for everyone to see. They're a very humble group, as you can probably tell. And the work that they've accomplished in a very short time, that I don't think people are even realizing is taking place, is pretty amazing. So the answer for that, even for me, you know, there's things they shared tonight that I might not even know they're out there doing all the time, which I think, you know, that success is, I would be curious to know what the families say, and I think at some point, we need to get that information. But it's going to be different in almost everything they do, and they do something different every day, almost every hour. It's not like you can just say, "This happened, and this happened, and this happened, and now we were successful." Does that make sense?
Michelle?
If I could just add, I've had the opportunity to be at farmer's markets with these folks, just out engaging the community, asking questions, getting feedback on a survey, and really seeing faces engaged, and I think that, and voice being heard. And that's the piece that sometimes hasn't been happening either, for a variety of reasons, obviously, and sometimes it's a language barrier, sometimes it's just communication, sometimes it's not shared understanding. So, when I see just being engaged in the community and being able to have a voice, that carries a long way, because we- a long way, because we all are in this, and we all need to work collectively together. And if we can break down those barriers, every child, every day, will have the opportunities. There won't be any little one who can't see over the fence, the goal is to get them all, all to a vision of success for each and everyone. So I thank you for that. I've really enjoyed working with the team when I've had that opportunity. And also, I think I'm dancing with some of the team members that want to go into that. We had students that, absolutely, it probably is.
It is.
But we were with students and engaging students in a very important conversation, but the warm-up to that was a little dancing, so we went for it as well. But really saying, you know, how do we engage our families? And it's a whole spectrum. As Ingrid, as you said, it's on a variety of opportunities to bring folks into the conversation.
Brenda?
This is probably more than we need for tonight, but I would really be interested, I know we started the Gary Howard training probably four years ago or so. I would be interested in hearing what, having a formal presentation about that, and hearing what we've seen happening in school because of that training. And then you mentioned, there's still ongoing work to bring everybody and train staffs at the schools and things like that. But I'd be interested in sort of the big picture of that, to learn more.
I think we could give Jennifer that assignment before she leaves, and then we could really drag that out so she doesn't go.
We wish the best for your family. And what state? I can't remember. Nashville?
Tennessee, yes, Nashville, Tennessee.
Nashville.
Yes, yes. I think, you know, we talked a little bit about family here, but some of the student pieces too. I know they've been engaged in a lot of things at Southwest. I know you were meeting with a student group. I think seeing that engagement piece, Luis and I partnered for, we covered a kindergarten class over at Chapel one day while they were going to do some early release, and the whole team was there. But, you know, the students were starting to get a little antsy, and I have to tell you, as soon as Luis started to engage with them and speak Spanish, and he really captivated them. And they knew enough about what he was saying, and he knew enough about what they shouldn't be saying, for him to interact, and the whole class was engaged all of a sudden. So it was really--
Kindergarten.
Kinder. And it was really a good example of what I think can happen if we can get in there and engage the students and have them understand, you know, what it's like to have equity and access. And so just a small example that I was able to witness myself that day, the whole, it just turned the whole class around, so.
Anything else from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your presentation, and thank you for your great work every day on behalf of our students and families. It's very important work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our topic next month will be a report on the Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners. And that concludes our report.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next is our superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Oh, my goodness. I'm moving faster down the agenda than I thought. I usually start with the calendar, so I probably should do that again tonight. We have a very busy calendar coming up, and all of our graduations, I believe, are posted on our website, on the district website, so that you can see. We have three of them coming up on June 5th, and that, beginning with West this year, then East and Southwest, all at the Crest Center. And I know about a year ago, they changed the time so that families could celebrate a little more before we move into the next graduation. And then, obviously, we have Preble High School on Wednesday, or I think it's Wednesday, June 8th, at 7:00 at The Rush, and then John Dewey Academy of Learning on Thursday. So busy, busy time, and all of those are posted on the district website. Also, CISA VII Senior Honor Awards banquet is coming up on June 2nd. And then we have our board meetings on June 6th, which is our work session meeting. And then, June 20th, will be our regular board meeting. So the month of June is full, and we're looking forward to all those celebrations as well. So that is my calendar. I do have a number of discussion items as well, and I'd like to invite Andy Sarno and Mike Stengel to talk a little bit about the facilities master plan, and give the board an update on the facility's calendar schedule and school visits coming up, so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I know that we had a discussion two weeks ago. There's a lot of information that was brought forward that night. We talked about a referendum, we talked about energy efficiency exemption, we talked about levying, and I wanted to just slow down a little bit. I wanted to slow down just a little bit and have an opportunity to revisit, answer some questions, have a little bit more discussion, and even just a little bit more focus. I'm going on script normally, I prepare, I want to make sure I succinctly talk about some things tonight, because I think we're at an important juncture. I've described this, as I talked to Mike Clark, because we've spoken to Baird, what can we afford? If we had a referendum in the fall, what can we afford? I wanted to talk to him. We've been working with Ms. Blakesley in the PR, and we've worked with Joe Donovan and Nick Kent. We've talked to them, and we've got a plan, and we need to make sure with all of these meetings that are going on, that we bring folks along with us, and that we communicate accurately and timely. And one of the analogies that I found is, you know, it's an awkward situation, because you've got a November 8th election, that a referendum could be on there, you guys don't have any action until August 26th, when you pass a resolution. So in the meantime, even looking back a few months, as we've been developing some of these thoughts, and as we've been sharing them with you, how do we make sure we bring them forward, yet are sensitive to what your wishes are? And I've called it kind of the, how green is the light? We've got a green light, we've got a yellow light or a red light. How do we make sure that we understand what that is? Because they're your wishes, bringing forward that resolution for a referendum, and I want to make sure that we all understand that. It's important to remember. I think we had some discussions two weeks ago about options and the timing of the facilities master plan. So I wanted to lay this out just a little bit and have a discussion tonight about that. And so Mike is here in a large supporting role, because he's got the history. He knows our buildings, and he's got that history of what we've done, along with many of you, because you've seen it either as taxpayers or as board members. And so if you do have any questions tonight, let's have an opportunity, we have a few minutes together, okay? The purpose of the facilities master plan, and I'm going to go back a little bit on that. Nick brought forward nine different points on his PowerPoint when he was here with us last time. The capacity and the demographics, and there's all those pieces. We need to understand our space. I don't think we do right now. We've got a lot of space, we don't have it in the right spot, and it's not necessarily the right space to begin with. We need to know who our customers are and where they're going to be. That's going to be important, because we need to make sure that we have appropriate space to educate them in the best way possible. We don't know that. We believe we do, because we've solicited that information, we have it now. Determine our needs, both brick and mortar again, that space, as well as that academic piece. And that's going to be important looking forward, and that's why it's important tonight to schedule that tour. Hopefully, that we'll get to go to La Crosse, Middleton, and Sauk Prairie while school is still in session, because I want to see those buildings, and I think a lot of, I think a lot of us want to see those buildings while they're in action. We need flexible space, and that's what we've already determined. Flexible, as in, a space can be used for multiple purposes, let alone, how can it flow with our needs, just generally speaking? A building, a room, a quadrant, what might that look like to be flexible?
You don't have to answer this now, it's something to think about. We always talk about flexible space, and I think we better, I think we need to find that a little bit better, and examples that we can share with our public as to what's wrong with the space that we have now. Why can't that be used for what we're talking about, why we need, quote-unquote, additional flexible space?
Okay, thank you. We'll address that in the future. So we've got the purpose behind the facilities master plan. We still have some immediate needs. And again, we referenced that 2014 document, there's still $30 million, and that was some solutions that were identified back in 2014. I think the buildings are still needs, I think we've been in agreement with that. How we address the solution might be different. I think that's what we saw in the document, but they're still there. Can those needs and solutions be a step in the right direction? Because we won't have the facilities master plan, we won't have that three, four-inch document in hand before November. November's an important date. Referendums have a higher success rate during presidential elections, because more people come out to vote. And the reason that I like that is it allows a better demographic of people to come out and vote. And it's important to consider. So can we have something that has been slowed down a little bit, which is the facilities master plan, still find some solutions to immediate needs, live within our means, which we spoke about last time, and make sure that we're headed in the right direction? We need to make sure that we're engaging groups. This timeline was originally very aggressive. We were supposed to have had the final document in hand about a month ago. I think we had a realization between Plunkett Racine and the district, and it was mutual. We needed to slow down, engage different groups. I have to admit, we've just started thinking about engaging the students. Mr. Becker was kind enough to say, should we think about some of the ICSC kids going on these trips to see the schools? I think that would be important. Can they afford, is it a valuable day to be out of school? Not for Andrew to decide, it's for maybe the principal or even parents to decide, but it's worth thinking about. As we're thinking about the long facilities master plan, and again, that November, can these two things go hand in hand, and be able to drop that November off and continue and wrap up the facilities master plan? It's possible, but it causes an even further delay. And we have the summer. It's difficult to engage people during the summer, whether it's students who aren't in our buildings, faculty, even the communities that are going about enjoying the hot weather. So we have to keep that in mind. I want to talk about the levy. Any questions? I hope we're all in agreement. I mean, it's, I want to talk about the document that I, and it's a busy document, and I want to focus a lot on some of the parts that I've highlighted. I'm going to go back to October, when we set the levy. And what is the levy? It's a dollar amount. It's how much money we either choose to or even have access to. Operational levy, we have our Fund 80, which is our community services fund, all of those different levies, that contributes to the $83 million that we have access to. That's the one pot that's, that goes along with the state aid that we receive. We're about 60, 70% state-funded, because there are property values, but the rest comes from a dollar amount from the taxpayers. And so that's that yellow, and we've got the current reality of 2015, 16 there again, just shy of $83 million. It's a dollar amount, that's the levy. Yellow and blue make green. What's blue? Blue is our property values. We're an 8.1, 8.2 billion dollar organization, that's what our taxing entity encompasses. And it's important to remember, because how property-rich or poor you are is dependent on how much state aid they give you. But then also, that property-rich or poorness, that value, is what determines your taxation rate, which is your mil rate. And so if we take that $83 million, we divide it by the $8.1 billion in blue, that gives us our taxation rate of $10.16 per thousand dollars of assessed value. On average, doesn't matter if you're residential, commercial, industrial, doesn't matter what municipality you live in, but when we hand that off, sometimes that matters. It does. But that's our taxation rate. And so when I talk about living within our means, an important piece behind this is, either the mil rate, which is the taxation rate, can we keep that flat? Or if things change, houses are being built, industry comes into the area, that value of land goes up, what happens to that taxation rate and whatnot?
Andy, can I slow you down for a second there?
Please.
Talk a little bit about the school district's property value. Prior to the recession in 2008, we were seeing an increase, 6%, 7%, an increase in the equalized value. After 2008, probably for three or four years, it declined 2%, 3%. I think in the last year or two, we've seen a slight increase. And I think it would, and so, and maybe you're doing this deliberately, but I think you're being maybe ultra-conservative in saying it's going to be flat.
Yeah.
What has it been the last couple of years? 2% to 3% increase?
One and a half to 2% the last couple of years.
So maybe we should see a couple of different scenarios--
Okay.
--with a flat property value increase, and then maybe one, 2% to 3%. Because I think that makes a significant difference. If we have a 2% to 3% increase in our equalized property value, that has a huge impact on our tax rate and our levy.
It does, yeah. Thank you, and that's a very valid point. This is very conservative. I've held that 8.1, 8.2 billion dollars throughout this period. And you're right, because that going up by 2% will actually drop the mil rate by 2%, and therefore, that whole living within our means and keeping that mil rate flat, that will be adjusted. And so that's fair, and I'd be happy to present that to you. So again, as we look at our mil rate, which is the percentage or even the levy, why is this all important now? If I take a look at the first, so I'm down on the bottom part, as we look at the graphical piece, all of those different components are what make up our levy, that $83 billion. In moving forward, that changes. It changes drastically. Now, next year, 2016, 17, I've still allowed for some of the green, which is the energy efficiency exemption. We have some projects, and I broached the topic last week. I'd like to bring something forward between July 1st and October 30th. So I've allowed for some funds there. But even that, we already see some of that brown. What's the brown? This is where we have a potential referendum. And as soon as next year, there's a couple million dollars that we already need to start levying money in order to make sure that we are able to maintain the mil rate. Living within our means and holding that flat and being respectful. And we're able to have that referendum without exceeding the taxes, without exceeding that tax rate, and I think that's important to consider. Especially if it ends up being something that fixes, that's a solution for a problem that's headed in the right direction. And this only goes out a few years. And again, I spent time with Mike Clark, we sat down a week and a half or so ago, and we ran through some different scenarios. And as we've messaged out in the past, and again, this has been very deliberate, as we have a referendum, we had one in 2014, we're already talking about one in the fall of 2016, and I think this is something that as we message this out, and making sure that we are conscious of this taxation rate, that we'd be able to maintain our schools and be fiscally responsible on both sides of the equation, to the taxpayer in addressing our needs facility-wise. Okay? Do you have anything to add at this point, Michael? Okay, thank you. So I guess the question is, what's next? We need, and I think on the agenda, we have some time to get those facilities tours scheduled. I'm excited about that. I think we're going to have, it's going to be a long day, but it will be a good day. Spoke about a $30 million referendum, and that's what I ended up taking a look at. You know, what does something look like, something like that look like? In speaking with Baird, RW Baird, the financial company, is $30 million, that's doable? 20 million? Well, then we're starting to be able to squeeze this, and I think Mr. Becker brought a really valid question for two weeks ago, interest rates are very low. Why are we looking at something short-term? Because we have the capacity to do that, we have the levy capacity to be able to pay that off quickly. Does that mean that we can't take advantage of low interest rates for a longer period of time? I think as we look at the master plan becoming, coming and being finalized, I think it's going to show some large needs in the pretty near future. And again, every few years, referendum, living within our means, is going to have to address that. And my hope is, and I don't think any of us could predict this, that interest rates will not increase to the point that they would have a large impact on the amount of money that we'd have access to. It's possible that they could increase. Please.
Isn't that, if we want to be able to give the best value to the taxpayer, though, don't we have to make our best efforts to look at where interest rates are? We're very near, I mean, although we're a little bit off the bottom, we're close-- We're very near, I mean, although we're a little bit off the bottom, we're close, we're still pretty close to the lowest of the last 40 years, right?
Yep, correct.
So if you look at, if you look at that, and, you know, I know it's not, I know it's not very common that in, that an elected body necessarily spends a lot of time looking at, are we going to be better or worse off in 10 years and 15 years and 20 years? But history would, history would tell us that if we're doing this every few years thing, and what did we get our, where do we end with, well, 3% with a lot of this?
That's a conservative estimate that I was giving.
So, when actually, and if we just look at where we were for, like, if it's little, I have EDPs and refinance, which are all very good to do so rates change, but history would tell us that in 12 years, probably we're not going to get 3% anymore. Probably not. I hope we do, right, but we probably won't. So I guess, I want to make sure, in addition to what Mike said, taking a look at reasonable property value impact, given that historic, the decline in property values was a once-in-a-lifetime event. So if we look at, I guess, to be, to be safe and conservative with your budget estimate, it doesn't, on the one side, you don't have to say that the values will stay flat, because they almost certainly won't. They could, and they may adjust. And on the other side, I think we have to not make the assumption that every borrowing in the future will always be at this good of rates, because it probably won't. And if we're fortunate, then maybe we adjust. So I guess I would, you know, we have our financial team and Baird, who I would hope should be able to, you know, run some, run some historical predictions, give us a, you know, tell us with 90% confidence, okay, well, this is what it's going to look like in 10 years with historical trends and so forth.
Sure.
I guess my point being, if, if we do a bit more now at 3%, one is unlikely that in 10 years, we'll be able to do things at 3%. Maybe I'd like to do a little bit more now, even if it impacts the mil rate, because you're getting more bang for the buck there.
I think, I think Andrew makes a really good point. I think there is, there's a danger in being too conservative with a dollar amount. I mean, if you look around the state, there are school districts of 3,000 and 4,000 and 5,000 students that are having $50 and $60 million referendums. I'm not throwing out that, people watching TV saying, gee, they're going to have 60 million. But I, we're the fourth largest school district in the state. So, and I was at the Michelle's parent meeting last week, and one of the parents says, you know, are we doing enough? She said, I for one would, if my taxes go up $15, $20 a year, it's worth it. So I think we should at least look at that. And if we do more than $30 million, what is the tax impact? Because I think we could all go out and talk to our community about the value and the fact that this school district has been very conservative, fiscally, maybe overly conservative, because we've got 42 buildings. And $30 million in a school district with 22,000 students and 42 billion, or 42 buildings is not a lot. That leaves a lot of needs unmet. And I understand, once we have our master plan, that we will probably have more referendums in the future. But I think maybe we have some schools that can't wait that long. So I just, I think we should not necessarily limit ourselves to, all right, we don't want to go any above a flat tax raising. So I think we should at least look at going beyond that.
So, just to clarify, so as we prepare options, what I'm hearing and looking to the board is that what you would like Andy and Mike to do and Nick is create a couple layers of options so that you can see, so you can put together what opportunities and make that determination.
Yeah, I think that's what Andrew and I were talking to you about.
Yep, yep, that makes sense.
And even, you know, and even project for us, you know, what, how much might we be at, if, if the trade-off is the mil rate goes up a little bit, how much likely are we better off if we look at a 10-year projection?
Sure.
Or a 15-year projection? Because we, if, if we can save, if we can save cumulative money over 15 years by doing more now, I'd want to do that. And if we were, you know, if we were sitting on 8% right now, I'd say maybe we do a little less now and stretch it out and see what we can do. But we're fortunately not sitting there. We're probably going to get better than 3, so.
Yep.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague, just to make sure I'm understanding this fully. You know, last time, Mr. Rishin put together a listing prioritizing what we need to be done with the district. And we, as a board, sort of determined, okay, what dollar figure did we think our community was comfortable with? So I think you're saying now is, looking at a list like that, go down to different levels and see what it would cost us at those levels to break it down out further.
Yes, yeah.
And that's exactly where we're looking at for, if we do do it with some fall. This is a list that you were talking about, Chris, is that we had our list of all the projects, and we determined that we're going to cut it off right below chapel. So this list is still items, our building needs that we have, that we're going to start working with as part of the proposals that we're going to bring back, along with melding in the facility study needs.
And I think we talked to Nick Kent two weeks ago, saying, and maybe I brought this up, that I don't necessarily want to be wedded just to that list, that if during PRA's examination of our 42 building, if something in there jumped ahead of something in there, I don't want to say, well, no, this is our list. I think we all, we should consider anything else that the facility study brought.
And that's what I meant, is that we're starting this as a basic, but then we're melding in their report, which will adjust what our list is.
If I could offer to, and I think this is, the solutions may look different than they did in 2014 as well. So that will be part of that discussion.
We have July 6th in front of us, and that's where we plan to bring some options. See what some things look like and how much they cost.
Okay.
So we're going to be bringing that forward at that point in time.
If I may, still trying to understand all this here now. In your presentation, you're looking at these different options on down, it seems to me you'd have to, let's say, you went to two down from whatever dollar amount to extend it out a little bit further. I mean, part of that analysis, and maybe this is what folks were saying, I didn't pick up on it there, you'd have to say, okay, at the current percent, this is what that's going to cost us. We anticipate, though, if we have to come back in two years, it's going to be at a higher percent. And how much are we saving or losing by waiting for that higher percent?
Sure.
I mean, I think that's what you're, or what you're asking me here.
If I could just offer, I think as we think about the full facilities master plan, and one of the things we've had really good conversation, and certainly piggybacks, what we discussed earlier around equity and access too. And I think that that's been a desire that we've heard from the Board of Education too. So as things bubbled up, I know, Mike, you've been out in buildings, and Nick was in every building to really make sure that what might have risen up to the top of the list, I know that we've had a lot of discussion around Baird, for example, but, you know, what are the other places where equity and access may have moved ahead of something else? And I think that's, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
So I'm confused in the timeline. When do you anticipate us having the full facilities master plan?
On paper, that was shared two weeks ago, it's spring of 2017. In that time, then, can we continue to work on the facilities master plan at the same time that we have a potential referendum? And I think we have to allow for some of the referendum to take place and prioritize with time. Allow for the beginning of school to get in session, but then we hit Christmas. And so that timeline that we brought forward last, two weeks ago, then, right after the new year, is making that last push, re-engaging folks, make sure that solutions are brought forward and everything is identified. And so that final document comes forward in March or April of 2017.
It seems to me we're going to have to say, if we go with referendum sense, master plan, that what we have in referendum has to be done, no matter what the master plan says. I don't know how else to explain to the public.
Right. That's correct. I mean, we know that we have some immediate needs with some space issues and some building issues that have been identified for a while and that are still bubbling up through the master plan. So we have those needs, and then the master plan is identifying additional needs. And so what we're trying to do is take care of some of the immediate needs that we know that, the sooner we can get to them, the better it is for students because of the conditions that we have. And then come back when the master plan is done and look at district-wide, other items that have bubbled up through the study.
Yeah, Chris is right. We talked about this two weeks ago. I think it's critical that we explain to the community, because they say, well, you're asking us for X amount of dollars and you don't have your master plan. It's critical that we explain, no matter what we do in November, we would have done it anyhow. Not that, well, the master plan comes along and whoops, I guess we did something we shouldn't have done. So I mean, that is going to be real critical when we do our explanation to the community of why we're spending money on a referendum six months before we have the master.
Well, and then we're able to say with authority that at least the list that is finalized for the referendum has been vetted through the master plan, that it's not something that's.
Right.
Yeah, because the master plan, it's not like it doesn't exist and then it exists.
Right, right.
It's there the whole time.
It's part of the process, and so we need to know that.
The whole information.
The things that we're presenting for a November referendum are.
Part of the master plan.
Part of the master plan.
And even though the master plan hasn't been delivered, a lot of upfront work, a lot of data has been collected, so a lot of these issues are already arising, so that when a fall referendum would be put together, it would blend with what the final report will be when it comes out in spring.
The master plan doesn't say, oh, no, you didn't need to.
Right, correct.
Because that's the last thing we want.
It's like a preliminary to the master plan.
Right.
I forget who said it when, but the, I think it was, I was having that conversation maybe with you, but anyway. If we were to do like the Eisenhower-Baird, which are the top two on that list, the potentially, the space we create in those schools would be sort of model classrooms of potentially, like you said, the flexible space, what is that? So we could potentially use some of the modern learning space ideas in those, in those two schools, and then have something to show for the future referendum, that, you know, what that means when we say flexible space and modern learning spaces.
Right. It would be examples that we can show the community on what we would like to do as a model throughout the district.
Right. Andrew, and then Chris.
I just want to address too, the, I appreciate the comments about student input into this. I think whenever, whenever we're taking a facilities tour, we should be including students. There is many students to pick from, and if it's a bad, if it's a bad day for certain students to go, there can always be others chosen primarily from ICSC or with the help of ICSC. If we don't, I don't want to bring student input in, if we don't bring it in before August and we're going to referendum in the fall, the decision on the referendum will have been made. Not that there won't still be input, but into how things will look, but perhaps, you know, what are we, what are we going to do design-wise could theoretically impact where, you know, where we go with the referendum and what's, what's on the list? How far are we going with modernizing classroom spaces? And certainly, while it's, while there may be some student reps for whom it's, it wouldn't be ideal whatever day we pick, there, it certainly is, certainly is far more important than other important things that we also excuse from, from school for, like sports. So I think we certainly can find someone who can go with a large group to pick from. I just think it's, it's important. If this were, you know, if this were January, we might have a little more time to work with, but we just, we just don't.
Chris?
Well, I had one thing, but now after Mr. Becker's comment. If you go to involve students, and I thought it would be more towards the master plan than the referendum based on what we said, what items might be in the referendum. But in any event, I think if they're involved, you have to come up with some way to question them on what they're seeing and what they're looking at, to get decent feedback, not just to say, well, what do you think? And that is a real fire with students. And I think we have to think it through with the students, by with the students, I mean, talking to them. Okay, if you're with us on these visits, you're also looking at elementary facilities. How does that fit in with your background, what you know? So I, and I don't think we're going to take primary youngsters with us to visit, but I think you're mostly talking about secondary. But Dr. Warren, you mentioned a good point about Baird. I hadn't thought about it. Let's say for the sake of argument, to take care of the Baird needs, as we know it right now, theoretically, it could be a referendum in the fall, and before you actually start construction, you have, you'd already have some of the master plan done, you'd have the rest done before you finalize the architectural design.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense to me. Yeah, that's correct, because, yeah, once the resolution's passed, work actually on defining the plan and really getting into details would not start until after the referendum. So that would give, you know, a lot of time to get student input before the referendum, and then as the plans are developed, to get student, community, parent input into the final plans, because the construction would not begin until the following summer.
Well, and again, I want to emphasize that we really need to have the information from the facilities study. I mean, Baird already is a victim of one, the open concept. That has, you know, that's created Baird's problems right now. I don't want to recreate that in the new Baird. So we really want to have solid information to be able to provide people to market this.
Just offer too, I think that one of the things as we look to in the buildings that, in the schools that we would go visit are very forward-thinking, taking existing spaces. They're not, are any of them brand new?
The La Crosse building is new.
One is brand new, but it's still a concept that is a little unique to, to schools, and it's around a community school setting, I think. But I also think that one of the things that people sometimes get concerned about is when we say, you know, flexible space, modern space, they think we're going to, you know, take it all away of what we currently have. And what I really like about it, and what's exciting about it, is how do you take, it's just like you would redo the inside of your home. It's making it a forward, you know, refreshed, modern, flexible space. So I think that to have students see that with us and really get excited about what that looks like. I think we want to make sure that our students have the very best moving forward as well. And I think we currently are in a good spot, but we can, we can obviously improve on that with everything. So excited to be competitive in that area as well. And I think that the schools that we're going to, talking about going to see are definitely schools that people in the community would tell you very positive things as a result of those new, new refreshed environments.
And to.
With all the marketing that's going on with public schools, would there be a likelihood that the schools that we visit would have us, bless you, videos demonstrating their schools, and that if a large group of students were interested in seeing that, going on a trip, would it be possible if we could bring that back or get that for them?
Or maybe we.
Or maybe we could even do something. I believe Middleton already.
Well, a lot of schools, a lot of districts have, I believe they have virtual tours, they've got.
I believe Middleton already does.
I wouldn't be surprised. Middleton and La Crosse because.
I've seen it.
They were so excited to have us come and that's why I'm looking for it. They, they've got this system down, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't surprise me if they.
Right. And if they could, that would show them an easier way for more people to see.
So we've got June 6th that's coming out. We've got the facility tours that we're going to get scheduled.
What's June 6th?
June 6th is where we're going to be presenting options. Here's, here's the solution, here's how much it costs. No, oh, I'm sorry, Ju- June 6th. Yeah, right around the corner.
So our work session.
Yep, yep. So it's June 6th.
You did mention July earlier.
I probably did. July 18th is where we would then have potentially more discussion and start refining that because then by August 15th is a first reading of a referendum resolution. August 26th, right around the corner then, is the actual resolution. So just to give that heads up. And again, monitoring what that looks like, what, what color is the light that works? I want to make sure that we're, we're on the same page. Any other questions or discussion?
No, other than we need to try to schedule a visit where more than two of us can go. Do you have dates in mind?
No, before June 10th. I think that's when most schools around that time get out.
Okay.
And again, I just wanted to see them in action. And whatever you guys decide, I will make happen. I know Mike's got a hectic schedule, but we'll, we'll make it happen. If we could have two options just to make sure that both, it worked out really well this last time. Worked for one school in the morning, one in the afternoon, and the one that happened to be in the middle was the one that worked whatever, so we'll, we'll make sure that it gets coordinated okay.
And next week, is that too soon?
I, I don't think it's too soon. If you told me Monday, may, we'll, we'll see, but, um, if thrown, if, if it works, I'd say we should toss it over.
I'm available Monday, the 30th, Tuesday, the 31st. I could.
For reasons of memorial.
Oh, yeah.
That's why you're available.
Well, sorry, looking at the wrong, yeah.
31st would work with your schedule, wouldn't it?
31st would. There you go. I could do it the 31st.
Yeah, I'm cleaning it up.
What'd you say, Chris?
I'm clean, clean, yes, I am. Sorry.
That's okay.
Good terminology, clean.
There's probably not, there's probably not many of these that'll work good for me personally. I'll, I'll go if I can, but I'll defer to what works for others.
All right. Did you weigh in, Mike?
Go ahead and schedule. I don't know if I can.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah, okay. All right, so we have four of us and potentially add.
Did you say?
I think I can, I'm pretty sure. I have to move some stuff.
What day did we say, 31st?
The 31st.
Okay. And it would be leaving.
Leaving by about 6:30 in the morning, 7 o'clock. I think I had us leaving at 7 and we got back at about 7 o'clock at night. Enough for travel time. We stopped and did a drive-through lunch, so, yeah.
Sometimes we quick drink.
Yeah.
That's it.
Depends if we have to food, depends if we have to fuel up. If we don't have to fuel up, I'm not pulling into the gas station.
No, that's where we eat.
I know, I don't want to do that.
Excuse me?
That means we all have to get out.
Sign up for this.
Try your own lunch, Chris.
We'll drive a load.
Okay, we'll bring our own.
We'll drive together, Chris.
I appreciate it as soon as you have that finalized, get it, the agenda to us.
Yep.
The timeline.
Yep. We've got it in an Excel spreadsheet and it gives the start time and how much time we wanted. It auto calculates, it's pretty slick, so. Okay. Can we come up with one more date? Should we just push for this? Now, I'll stay in touch with Sandy because I, I can give, I can get to these schools tomorrow and we should know. Do we want an alternative, alternate date? Is that going to be hard?
Could muddy the waters?
Muddy, yeah? Stick with this? Okay. I'm, I'm happy with one.
Lucky we came up with that. I'm looking at the rest of.
5:31.
To the 10th.
Okay. Good. Let me excuse myself before something changes.
All right. All right, so the next thing is, I mean, I was talking with Michelle and Katie and I, and, um, normally in Ju-, oh, you guys.
Okay.
Normally in June, we would do a superintendent evaluation, the midterm evaluation, and there's no, um, the only evaluation that legally we have to do is the one in January. And so I was thinking this year, instead of doing the superintendent evaluation, since we have all of the survey data giving us feedback on board, um, you know, as a board and then also just the district in general, that we could have a superintendent board team meeting and go over the, the information we have from the survey, the comments that, that are specifically for us as board members and come up with some goals that we could set based on that. So that's, that's kind of what I was thinking. And so I'm looking at, at having a meeting, scheduling something in, um, in June, mid to, probably more mid-June, for me. And I don't know if anybody has any other comments about that format or if that sounds okay.
What about the second Monday?
Yeah, the 13th is open.
Does that work, girl?
That's good for me.
Chris?
13th?
Sure.
Andrew, you could.
So what time, we can start, um, eight times, it's just the eight of us. What works for you, Andrew?
Five.
Five, okay. Does that work for everybody else?
Sure.
All right. Oh, it goes fast.
That's good.
Yeah, there are so many wonderful things and I'm sure the students will highlight those. Are you guys giving full reports? You know, I just wanted to just share that last week, um, along with Brenda, um, Dr. Warren and I had the opportunity to be part of the ribbon cutting ceremony at East High School where they opened the Devil's Brew Coffee Shop. And I think what was exciting about it is it really supports our mission of all means all, every child, every day. It's a coffee shop, it's our newest entrepreneurial innovative pathway affording students. These particular group of students are students who receive services for special education, an opportunity to really learn and engage in real-life experiences that I think are very, very valuable. I was very impressed with the students and how they are, they learn how to start a business, run a business, and they're running this business, I think, every day in the schools. Now, they're, they're working with staff now and doing that interaction with adults, but I'm understanding that soon the students are already clamoring across the school saying, you know, how can we be part of this and we, we'd like to have our coffee in the morning? I'm not sure where that fits or where that's going to go. I know they also on, on Tuesdays have bakery products delivered from the students who are part of the culinary arts program and they sell those as well. But I think it's really, um, talking with Shane McDonough, who is the work experience coordinator for, for the school, talking about the opportunity to really provide our students with hands-on, um, opportunities to learn and engage, right, in real-life experience and employability skills is really invaluable. And I think it's just one more pathway the district affords our students, this particular group, but also all students in terms of gaining greater independence and supporting our students into the future. So it was a really fun, um, opportunity to participate in, very impressed with the students, their professionalism and already, I think, the extraordinary work experience that they've had. And I would assume that they would serve you coffee if you came over too, but I'm sure they'd have to charge you as well.
That's right.
Anyway, they're, they're doing a great job. It was really exciting and I believe West High School also started a business over with their students, a balloon business. So lots of great entrepreneurial, um, opportunities to prepare our students for the future.
If I may?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm old enough to remember when the youngsters we're talking about here, in many cases, weren't even allowed in regular schools. They're put in special schools or kept at home. They can't learn, they can't do anything. That's, that was said way back when. And there are several people that said, wait a minute, wait a minute, they're students, they're human beings, they can learn. And the push came through to put them in school to learn alongside, quote unquote, "normal kids," whatever normal means, and look at where they are right now. And I think that's fantastic and speaks well to public education and what we do for our students.
Well, if I could just wrap it up, um, they also featured, if you watch the television, they did the story at, at the Devil's Brew Coffee Shop grand opening, but then they also went over to Titletown Brewing Company and interviewed one of our students who is working as one of the, I don't know if it's a chef or a cook prep, kind of, a prep cook at Titletown Brewing Company. So we really excited to have our students working, included in the community and being part of the workforce as well, so. Valuable contributions to our community, so.
You're keeping him on after his 21st birthday.
Are they? So he's employed, so. Looking for other opportunities like that for our students to continue into the world of work and career as well, so. Anyway, it was exciting. All right. That concludes my excitement for today.
Thank you, Dr. Laino.
It was really awesome.
Next is our InterCity Student Council Report.
Hi, I'm Grace Sinclair. I'm a sophomore at Preble High School. I'm the current vice president of student council, but we tore her ACL and had to get surgery, so that's why she's not here today. Yeah.
Play soccer?
Yeah. And I'm next year's president, so I'm accompanied by next year's secretary treasurer, Hunter. As I said, I go to Preble, so I'll be sharing good news for John Dewey, Preble and East. So for John Dewey, they had their trees for the girls and boys, both went to their trees for tomorrow and that went really well. The seniors are finishing up their capstones and their public capstone is coming up soon. They have a PTSD car wash and they also have a school lock-in coming up. Um, for East, they're getting ready for senior ball and that's on June 7th. And sports are going good. They got the water bottle fillers installed in their school, the like, by the water fountains.
Oh, okay. Stu?
Oh, so good.
The whole school?
Um, I think she said there's.
Couple of?
Yeah, there's a couple of them in like each hallway, there's one at least, I think. And they also have a senior lock-in coming up. And then for Preble, um, our play rumors went really well. Our baseball team is ranked third in the state right now. Track is doing extremely, extremely well and we have, also have some runners that are ranked in state. Our JV soccer is number one in the conference and varsity is also doing very well. They both went undefeated this weekend in the Green Bay tournament and took first place, both teams. We have an upcoming blood drive on June 1st and this week is spring fling week and Friday's senior ball.
Okay, and then I will be sharing for West. Senior ball evidently went well and BayLink Manufacturing is working on another trailer. Two students won gold at the French State Forensics Competition, which was held recently. And the freshman baseball team, which I think is combined with East, continues with their perfect record.
Oh.
Uh, for Southwest, we recently had our spring fleek, spring fling week and our overarching theme was do be nice, which is a national, um, kind of trademarked theme that a lot of schools are using, which just basically promotes, um, being nice to all students and including multiple students in activities throughout the week. One of our monitors was honored at the end of the week in a ceremony during one of the assemblies and his name is Roger and we just gave him, uh, he likes gardening, so he got a tree and, which was to represent the school. And then, um, we supplied stones from each student to represent the students that he supports. Senior ball was this past Saturday, which went well, and girls soccer and track have also been doing well, um, in their recent competitions. Lean In Club, which is a group to empower women at our school, which is new this year, is having an event where, um, students in the school can purchase Tom's shoes in particular and then decorate them. And then the company will supply a pair of shoes to a child in need throughout the country. So that's something neat coming up. And then our auditorium renovation is progressing nicely and I think it's going to be coming to a close soon, maybe this summer. And I know that the music.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, the dedication.
Tomorrow night?
Grand.
Okay. And I know that they're very excited to use.
That's cool.
Use that, so.
That's all we have. All right.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Perhaps you know, and, and I've been out of town, so I only caught part of the paper. Uh, did I see that on the Prebles Track Team 20?
Yes, you did.
Young man now run under five-minute miles?
1,600, yeah.
That's just unbelievable.
Yeah, I know.
It's really fast.
We have an incredible student athletes. Every day I read in the paper, and we have academics, you know, you didn't mention Spencer Goo, who was academic, I don't know what they call that.
The academic team.
Team for Chris Gazette from Preble High School as well. So we have to celebrate.
That's great, you're talking about Preble, but I, I've often told, and I'm sure you would agree with this, I mean, you can't go wrong in any of our high schools.
I would.
There's, there's a niche for you academically, athletically, um, to make your mark. There, there really is. We have some fantastic teachers and coaches in, in each one of them.
Absolutely.
I think, um, as a community, we're very fortunate.
And then we have the InterCity Student Council meeting.
Yes, on the 25th.
Next week.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, not a Thursday. At 7, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our legislative liaison report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. The first, and I thought this was a good time for this as we head into next budget year to update the board on where we are with voucher funding for 2016, 17. You have attached to my agenda, a voucher article that Dan Rossmiller sent up and he looked at the Milwaukee, Racine and statewide programs and I'll, I won't go into the Milwaukee. The Milwaukee program's been in existence for 22, 23 years, the Racine program about four or five years and the statewide program for a couple of years. One thing all three programs share is that the payments of voucher schools in 2016, 17 will be the same for all three programs. Students will, in, uh, for each voucher student in grades K-8 will receive $7,323 and students in grades nine to 12 will receive $7,969. The statewide program, for students in the statewide program who participated in the program prior to the 2015 school year, the state will pay the full amount of the voucher payment. These students are not counted by their resident school district for revenue limit or state aid purposes. The voucher payments for these students are paid from state general purpose revenue, which comes mainly from state income and sales tax. For students in the statewide voucher program who began participating in the program in the 2015, 16 school year or later, the voucher payments are funded by transferring state aid away from the district in which the student resides into the participating voucher school in which this student is enrolled, an amount equal to voucher payment for that student. The voucher student's resident school district is allowed a non-recurring revenue limit exemption to the amount of aid lost, which gives the school board of the district in which the student resides the option to levy amount up to the amount of the exemption, but does not require the resident district board to do so. Of course, if the board does not levy this amount under. Of course, if the board does not levy this amount under revenue limits, the law state represents a cut to the district's budget. And I just wanted to stop there for a comment. It would be my recommendation that we always levy to the full amount for two reasons. Number one, I want our taxpayers to know that they are funding students' private education out of public tax dollars. And secondly, and most importantly, if we don't levy to the full amount, we will be taking that amount out of our classrooms, and our students will be suffering. So that would be my recommendation, and I think that's what, I think Michelle and staff agree with that. Finally, it says voucher students who began participating in statewide voucher program in the 2015 school year or later are counted in the revenue limit and stated calculation of their school district of residence, although there's a one-year delay before any of these students generate any aid for the district. Now, after I got that, I wanted, I talked to Dan Rossmiller, and I wanted more information to share with the board, and this is some follow-up information that he forwarded me. He'd explained how the district enrollment cap works under the statewide voucher program. The total number of pupils residing in the district who could participate in the choice program from each district in any year is limited to more, no more than 1% of the district's prior year membership. That was in 2015-16, and now that is also the case in 2016-17. The enrollment limit will increase by one percentage point in each year, beginning in 2017-18, until the enrollment limit reaches 10% of the district's prior year enrollment. In the year following and every year thereafter, no enrollment limit would apply. And secondly, how does someone qualify for the statewide voucher program? A student qualifies on the basis of their residency and their family's income, if applicable. Students must reside in a Wisconsin school district other than in the city of Milwaukee and Racine Unified School District. Additionally, pupils in the program must meet at least one of the prior year's school attendance requirements. Number one, have been enrolled in a public school in Wisconsin in the 2015-16 school year. Two, have not been enrolled in school, in school in the 2015-16 school year. And three, being applying for kindergarten, first, or ninth grade at the private school in the 2016-17 school year. Or four, participated in the program in the 2015-16 school year. For the 2016-17 school year, a new student must have a family income at or below the amount listed in the table below. Table below, the statewide program limits participation to 185% of the federal poverty level, and for a family of four, it's $45,263. The income limit in the Milwaukee and Racine programs is 300% of the poverty level, and there has been discussion in the state capital of either increasing the income limit to the statewide program to 300%, or removing the income cap totally. And the first time that can be done, obviously, is in the next state budget. Students who participated in the state program in 2015-16 or were on the DPI's waiting list in 2015-16 are not required to prove that they are income-eligible. Family income includes the income of the child's parents or legal guardians that reside in the same household as the student applicant. If the child's parent or legal guardians are married, their income is reduced by $7,000 when determining income eligibility for the program. Now, the, there's also a provision that once in, always in. For example, if a family is below the 185% of the poverty level, and then a parent gets a raise, gets a new job, wins the lottery, and goes above that, you're still in. So it's once in, always in.
They don't revisit it.
They don't, it's not revisited. Once in, always in.
So that would be, that would be different than every, every single state grant or benefit program ever invented?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
All of them? Because the six-month recertification is standard for everything.
The laws, or the law on vouchers is very specific, once in, always in. Okay. All right, Michelle.
Just, I don't know if you saw this, I, there's a program called Up Front with Mike O'Shea on Sundays.
Oh, yeah, I know what that, um.
Yeah, and yesterday, I think it was yesterday, he had a, was reviewing a study on private school vouchers in the Milwaukee Parent Choice Program, Parental Choice Program, and the study shows that 41% of the schools in the Choice Program have eventually closed. So I think that that's something as we talk about vouchers and whatnot, too. I haven't seen the study, I don't know specifics of it, but I have seen just an overview of that.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that? I think I heard you, but it just, it's sort of a shocking figure.
Forty-one percent of the, of the schools that have opened in Milwaukee during the Parental Choice.
The charter schools.
And.
Choice schools, voucher schools. Voucher schools that open, forty-one percent.
Have closed. Have closed.
And that money went where?
Over the course of 25, over the course of 25 years.
Yes, during the course of the Choice Program.
You don't run a business that way, do you? Our state seems to want to.
I think, if I recall, and I, I'm going to have to go back, I just caught a segment of the program, but basically, it was, they close for a variety of reasons. Some the state close, some they just, as we know, and I know, Mike, you shared this, sometimes they just go away. They disappear at night, the one did, so you just don't know.
And Milwaukee public schools have to scramble to accommodate their kids. All of a sudden, there could be 300 students without a school. So MPS obviously have to scramble to accommodate those kids, often at very short notice.
Well, you know, you don't have to go to Milwaukee to wonder about that, because, you know, Milwaukee, you wonder where the money went, and depending on the time of the year when those schools close, those kids come back to public schools without funding following them.
Right.
But we had something here locally when the International School closed, all of a sudden, and where'd the money go. Fortunately, there weren't that many youngsters who could be accommodated in the schools, our system and others, but readily, but it's, it happens.
Michelle and Brenda and I were at a hearing in Madison a year and a half ago for a Legislative Education Committee, and Darian Driver, who is the superintendent in MPS, was talking about every year after the third Friday in September count, where you, your state aid is based on, and then the voucher schools would get that money for those kids, and hundreds of kids after that date are all of a sudden sent back to Milwaukee public schools. And then they already have the money.
And you're.
And they keep the money.
Yeah. Your point being the people there keep the money and run.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Second item, and Jean Marsh is going to join us at the table. In mid-April, the Department of Public Instruction requested of every Wisconsin school district that they complete and return a survey about whether and to what extent they are experiencing teacher shortages and how they're addressing those. There will be a series of meetings in every CISA district in the state where this information will be shared, and they'll be talking about strategies dealing with them. The one at CISA 7 is at May 24th, and I know Jean will be attending along, perhaps with some other staff. So Jean is going to share with us some highlights of Green Bay's report to DPI.
Well, we turned in our report via the internet to our, to DPI on April 25th, and Terry Williams along with Tina Noack did the majority of the background to be able to fill out the report accurately. What the DPI was asking is they went through 41 different positions in the district, mostly teacher positions and some administrative positions, and we had to answer some questions about the applicant pool, and, and then the DPI quoted it as to whether or not we were in an area of, supply was normal, supply was below normal, or there was a extreme shortage. Those are some of the categories. And we found that as we looked at our candidate pool and then the licensing, so the qualified candidates within the pool, we had several key areas of shortage, which I think you're familiar with. Obviously, it is our bilingual teachers, tech ed, family consumer science, and special education were the top areas that we identified as the most short. The DPI asked, in turn, and also in the survey, is what were some of the strategies that we've implemented to work on, on this? And, you know, one of them was, for example, do you have a mentorship program for your teachers? Do you have a future teachers' organization for students? We also looked at, we have bonuses, we have, we do hire teachers on permit. We have, and permits are, permit teachers are considered teachers who are not highly qualified. So for example, the person would have a degree, but not a degree in education and in the area that they're supposed to teach. So the goal is to remedy that by increasing the number of qualified applicants in the pool who carry the license. One of the things that I, I know the DPI is aware of is some of the licensing requirements in, in the state. For example, if you're going to teach Spanish-speaking children bilingual in special ed, you need a license in bilingual, you need a license in special ed, and you need an educator license. And so it's sometimes difficult for people to get all the licenses that they need. They may have one or two of the licenses, but they may not have the license in the particular area. So the DPI, I think, is well aware of that, and those are some of the things that I think will come out, hopefully will come out of this, this survey. We've not seen the overall results, but that's what I think we're going to find when we, when we meet at CISA on the 24th.
May I have questions for Jean? All right, thank you, Jean. I also am attending that meeting, so. Thank you, Jean. And that concludes my report.
All right, thanks, Mike. Next, we have district events. There's, I do have one thing. I was asked by a parent at Aldo, she, she's organizing, they have an Aldo Legacy Day on Saturday, June 4th, and it's, it's a family event. They have silent auction, they have performances, artwork for students, and then they have booths of various people, I mean, businesses that are selling things and information kinds of booths and things like that. She contacted me and wondered if our district would be interested in setting up space, and I guess I'm, we haven't, I haven't established that we're going to do this yet, but I just wanted to see if there would be board members who would be interested in, in being there. It's from 10 to 3, and it, you know, I don't know that we have to cover the entire, the entire time, but if there would be people that would be willing to take a one or two-hour shift on the, on the 4th, just let me know. So, and I, I will communicate with her as to whether or not we want to do that.
Yeah, you can put me down, I'll be, not the entire time, but I'll be able to help.
Yeah, okay, good, all right.
I can do, Brenda.
Oh, okay, good. And I can, I can do it, too, for, for a while. So if anybody else is interested, let me know, and we'll.
Okay, what's that, June?
June 4th, Saturday.
June 4th or Saturday.
10 to 3. So, and then I'll let you, pardon?
One more.
Well, and I'll let you know if, I talked with Michelle about this, and she thought it might be nice to have, you know, some, like, treat it as information about our district, because obviously, it's a lot of families that, that make choices about where to send their kids to high school and have information like that. But anyway, it's just, just some thoughts going on right now about that.
We have very cool banners we can take, right? Banners?
Yes.
That'll, that'll show, and I think the other piece is, we do have a lot of the students who attend, obviously, will be making a choice to high school and which one, and so to have any kind of representation from our high schools. You know, I, of course, went way over the deep end, and I thought the culinary arts could serve. Anyway, and, well, we'll work on that, so.
Chris?
Is, with this, and I don't quite understand the activities going on here yet, but is this an area where perhaps former Aldo Leepold students who are now in our high schools could come back and be part of it? Something to think about, I guess?
Yeah, potentially. I was there last year for a few hours, and I can't recall, you know, all of.
Well, we had the InterCity Student Council meeting next week or whenever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a very cool idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We'll bring that up. All right, that's all I had. Anything else, maybe? All right, then we will move to our system reports. First is Teaching and Learning, was facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have two actions.
The first one, I move that the K-5 Elementary English Language Arts Resources, as presented, pending the budget process, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Laka?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen 6-0.
These were both discussed at length at our work session. I move that the Middle School Science Resources, as presented, pending the budget process, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Laka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Karen 6-0.
And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you. Next is organizational support, and that'll be facilitated by Dr. Wagner.
Good, thanks, my. Okay, thank you. Moving on down.
Oh, and we actually, we completed number one while you were.
Yes, Sandy, thank you. Sandy, that's one of the benefits by sitting.
Yes. You got all the inside information. She coaches them all along, yes.
Oh, okay. First recommendation is that the Boys and Girls Club of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school programs for Jefferson, Fort Howard, Dance, Keller, and Nicolay Elementary Schools.
Second.
Now, I know if we have questions, I know Cory's.
Cory's here, and Mark.
I have a.
And, okay, go ahead and ask a question.
Maybe we'll wait till Cory comes up.
Yeah, just have them come up.
And actually, my question goes to both of them, but I think we can probably talk to them. Are these the same schools that these organizations had last year, and do Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA offer basically similar programs or the same services? So you could address both of those.
Excellent question. The recommendations that are coming forth tonight are the schools that, that both community-based organizations, Boys and Girls Club and YMCA, currently offer programs. I would say that because of some structural changes with the RFP process and greater or increased collaboration between the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and the district, there's more similarity with, among all of our programs because of the ongoing collaboration with all of the, are all of the after-school program sites. Much, there's been a, many components this year that we've worked collaboratively with the district, whether it's with our pupil services or special ed department around second step, social, emotional, learning support. We've worked directly with the Teaching and Learning Department to provide AVMR-level training around the activities that are used with the math component. So because of the collaboration that has occurred over the last year and a half, there are a lot of similarities in the program components and what's being offered to our students.
Cory, do you have total number of students served in each, by each organization?
The, each organization, I would say, if we had to estimate on any given time, because attendees are defined as 30 days or more, each of the community-based organizations range between four and 450 students per day.
You know, if you could, in like, the next week's update, I'd like to see a breakdown by school.
Absolutely.
Students that participate, we could see that in the next update.
Would you like to know what the average daily attendance is, or as the grant defines, that the 30 days or more per epidemic year?
What do you think is more, more relevant?
Okay.
I, I, well, let me add to that. I mean, based on what you're saying, is there like a range, then? And I don't know how much that range varies. I wouldn't mind seeing that if that's not too much trouble.
Yeah, absolutely. Part of the range is developed based on how the grants were submitted to DPI. So obviously, the schools that are listed, the student enrollment at each of those sites vary greatly from, you know, approximately 150. in, those numbers are based on the initial grant applications at the time.
Okay, just so I'm clear on this here. We're talking about the youngsters attending the after-school program, not the enrollment of the schools themselves.
Right. I'm just, I'm making that reference just based on, we would obviously be able to recruit more at a school that serves 500 students than at one that would serve 150. But we can definitely pull that information.
And the good timing of this is that, yeah, we scheduled out, and Mike and Julie and I talked earlier today, Cory, as part of after-school programming, what the grants require to do a public report out is scheduled to come in July--
Correct.
--to provide a bigger report out over the state of after-school programming. So we'll give you just enough to want you to come back for more, so that you can have that in July. So in full disclosure, we will also tell you that, so to answer Mike's question, all of the sites that are up here are sites that we currently have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club. Same with YMCA, but what's up on the screen is the Boys and Girls Club. The one that is not up there is Franklin Middle School. We currently have a partnership with Franklin Middle School. We're in communication with the overall program delivery and in conversation with Boys and Girls Club and what they believe that program should look like. And we didn't feel like we were on the same page quite yet to bring it forward for recommendation. We will. We've met with the staff, and we'll continue to work on that, but just terms of the timing, we didn't feel like it was ready to bring it forward with the recommendation.
We'll definitely have it this fall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Cory.
And we-- Oh, you're in charge.
Sorry, at the radio, we're being too--
Yeah, we're in charge. I'm in charge.
Okay. So with that one exception, then, these are, both motions reflect the same provider at, the same providers for schools that were last year. Were there, did other organizations propose to do more schools, and we just ended up this way? Or did the two organizations just propose to keep their own schools? Were there any third-party proposals to get into this? Can you just briefly summarize that?
Sure. Sure. The Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA only submitted RFPs for the schools that they're currently serving, with the exception of Lincoln Elementary School, which is a site that was a newly awarded grant from DPI last June, and that site presently is being led by the district. So I'm working directly with the site director, and we are contracting with CISA VII for the payroll aspect of the employees running that site. We chose to retain that site. We're in a five-year cycle for the grant that was awarded last June, and we want to kind of give it a good faith effort by committing to providing services there as a district, so that's a site that I'm directly overseeing. We did have one additional community-based organization that submit, submitted an offer for all of the sites, but from a fiscal responsibility, the cost was more than double of either of our current community-based organizations. It was also not a local organization. It was out of state, and that was the only other RFP that we received.
Okay, thank you.
And then does Washington have an after-school program? No.
Not presently. Washington lost state funding, I believe, three years ago, prior to my arrival in this position.
But Franklin didn't?
Franklin currently is a Fund 80 site, so it's not, does not receive financial support through the 21st Century Community Learning Centers.
And is there a need for a program?
Yeah, I think you, you've kind of unlocked the whole, you know, discussion around Franklin Middle School. What does after-school programming look like at the middle school level? And that is what we really need to make sure we can do well, as we've learned from past experiences. We want to make sure that we are being good stewards of both Fund $80, but then also the 21(c) grand dollars. And those are the two funding sources that give us our after-school program. So our goal is to be able to really make sure that we have a framework that works for middle school, and that there's buy-in, and there's ownership, and it can be something that's sustained over time as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could also offer that, one of the things we bump into with middle school programming is the fact that the school is doing a lot--
Yeah.
--within the school. And I think that that's where you've got your outside providers coming, and where does that fit in the big picture? And so it's, what are students attending? What are they having access to? And middle schoolers have some independence.
A good, bad problem to have, right?
Yeah.
Kids are getting pulled and involved in a lot of things.
But it's sometimes very challenging to move them in one direction, and teachers are staying after, and there's opportunities for different clubs and athletics and so forth. So I think that's been part of our discussion internally as well, as to, being former middle school principals, Mr. Smith and myself, and Ms. Paul, really understand that middle school and where they kind of want to go. So we are attending to that, and I think they both, both Cory and Mark have paid special attention to that as well.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you, Cory.
Sandy?
Becker? Becker?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
Next recommendation is that the YMCA of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school programs for Howe, Doty, Eisenhower, Sullivan, and Tank Elementary Schools.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
Next, we're going to move to human resources agenda, and we have several recommendations here, and it's basically all good news. The first recommendation is that the employment of Dennis Christensen as principal 12-month at Washington Middle School at a salary of $107,029, group 6, 100 percentile for the 2016-17 step contingent upon pre-employment requirements effective July 1, 2016, as presented, be approved.
Second.
And I believe the resume was in the board packet.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
That the transfer of Patrick Dillhund, Special Education Program Evaluation Specialist, 10-month teacher at a salary of $63,774, Step 16, 2015-16 step to Special Ed Education Supervisor, 12 months at the district office at a salary of $72,564, Group 11, 90th percentile, 26-17 step, effective July 1, 2016, as presented, be approved.
Second.
And I'd point out that these positions were talked about previously.
Sandy?
Fleckah?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
That the transfer of Nicole Shidi, Special Education Compliance Specialist, 10-month teacher at a salary of $58,390, Step 7, 2015-16 step to Special Education Supervisor, 12 months at the district office at a salary of $70,953, Group 11, 80th percentile, 20-16-17 step, effective July 1, 2016, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
That the transfer of Nicole Shidi, Special Education Compliance Specialist, 10-month teacher at a salary of $45,862, Step 2, 2015-16 step to Special Education Supervisor, 12 months at the district office at a salary of $69,341, Group 11, 86th percentile, 2016-17 step, effective July 1, 2016, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
And the next is that the table of organization be changed to reflect the addition of a 1.0 FTE Safety and Security Coordinator, 12-month, at a salary of, in Group 13, $56,870 to $67,291, as the 2015-16 rate, and that the associate job description, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0.
And next, there are the consent, the consent items, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0. That's it?
Thank you.
All right, we do have a closed session, so I'll read that motion. Special Board meeting, closed session, has been scheduled for Monday, May 16. Immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f) considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, will be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person reporting such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. In pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit potential contracts. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Fleckah?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Karen, 6-0. We'll convene across the hall. And you two are free to go.
Good.
Good. Okay. [music] What's your tomorrow? [music]